PRs are working properly, or you have access to YouTube. We did want to take the order a little bit differently so that the Planning Commission, we know that you're pretty steeped in the process of Plan Santa Barbara and where we're at, and so we'll let you run off and do the second item just with the TCC, if that's okay. And tonight, if you recall, we had a joint session earlier this year where we introduced you to Brian Welsh and Farron Pierce, the Farron Pierce team, and also Dan Girah of AMEC and the environmental team, and what they're working on and the excitement about them actually doing a transportation model. And we know from the questions that you all asked that you were also very interested. One of the comments from our consultant after the meeting was, and Brian was saying that in all his years, he had never seen so many detailed questions from a committee or a planning commission. So it really is reflective of the kind of interest that you all have in really finding out what it is behind these transportation models and really the care for the city.
Are you not supposed to do that?
Yes, you are. I don't know about other cities. So we did want to, at your request, you asked us to come back, and so we wanted to let you know exactly where we're at. We thought this was a good milestone to come back to you. One of the big items you received was an existing transportation, Transportation Existing Conditions Report, and the objective of this is really to be the baseline information for both the model, the transportation model, as well as the SEQA document. SEQA documents have a really strong, they're supposed to have a very strong existing conditions statement so that you can then move forward in the analysis to see how things are going to change, particularly with the Plan Santa Barbara policies, how would that change? And so this is really important. We actually had it bound and, just to make it a kind of official document, but that is going to be incorporated into the SEQA document. And then, so what Brian's going to do is he's going to go over that report and then let you know how those, the indicators or what we found out in the Existing Conditions Report gets folded into the baseline conditions for the transportation model and those assumptions. And then also, he's going to be giving you a little bit more detail about some of the assumptions that you were all asking about last time in the model, such as characteristics and then also the transportation analysis zones. Many of you had questions about that. How fine are they going to be? He's going to show you that tonight and show you the work that they've done so far. And then entertain questions, and I'll be coming back, following him up, just to give you a wrap-up of where our next steps are. He's going to cover a little bit of that. So here's Brian Welsh from Farron Pierce.
Thank you, Rob. Could we dim the, maybe the lights just on the screen so that's a little sharper? The other thing that I learned from the last session is when I'm in Santa Barbara, I've always got to remember that there are a combination of bears and gauchos around here, and I need to be careful about that. What we wanted to do, and I've got, I'm going to go fairly quickly. You have the Existing Conditions Report in front of you, so I'm necessarily going to spend a little less time on the first part of the presentation, which deals more with the Existing Conditions Report, and perhaps spend a little bit more time on modeling processes and assumptions. There's too many slides for the amount of time, so I do apologize if I click too fast. We can definitely, interactively, if you have a quick question, we can certainly do that, but then we'll also have time after I'm finished to follow up.
Can we get a couple of the slides?
Yes, absolutely. This is an effort that's been pulled together by the team that you're familiar with, as well as our partners. There's data from the sources you see in the middle in this report as well. The key information sources that are, the Existing Conditions Report is heavily referenced and cited, and the data was assembled from a number of different places as well. Those are the, these are the key sources. The methodology, it includes reviewing, analyzing, and evaluating. There's a combination of giving you the statistics, doing some interpretation and analysis, and then giving you a sense of, you know, what does this mean? How does this fit in? And one of the overarching parts of this that we want to make sure that's clear is that the purpose of the Existing Conditions Report is obviously, as Rob said, it's part of the setting for SEQA, but it also informs the modeling effort. And this modeling effort, as you know, will be utilized to evaluate general plan scenarios down the road, and it's also critical, of course, in the environmental review itself. So it's going to be important for helping you make decisions about the data that comes out of the model, as well as the impacts and mitigation measures that are part of California Environmental Quality Act. So this slide is to give you a sense, the report talks in great detail about the socioeconomic characteristics of the modeling area. If you look at the highlights, you have a very good, under transportation, a third of the commuters do not drive alone to work. That is, that's above average, frankly, for metropolitan areas or suburban communities in California. The other thing, you'll notice that two-thirds of the city residents live and work in Santa Barbara, which is also a, generally, there's a lot of communities where you're not going to find that good of a balance or even a match. Now, one of the things about jobs housing is that there needs to be both a balance, but you have to have a match between the incomes of the workers and the jobs and how much they pay. Merely having a lot of workers and a lot of jobs in the same community, as we know, doesn't guarantee that they're going to live and work in the same place. So let me briefly run through the overall areas that we did. We have autos, you know, you'll see me go through autos and bikes and Peds and so forth. And in each case, I'm going to give you a few highlights and then talk about the opportunities. Under Existing Conditions, most of the facilities and the intersections that we evaluated within the city are currently meeting your level of service standard. The ones that don't are generally concentrated in and around the freeway interchanges, which is traditional and very typical. As you're driving around, you know what to watch out for. You know that when you approach freeway ramps and their ramp terminals, you're going to generally run into some congestion, especially during the morning and afternoon peaks. The conditions in Santa Barbara, another theme that we'll run through is the nature of the commutes is borne out by where you have the congestion, people getting on and off the freeway. This excerpt from one of the graphics in the Existing Conditions Report shows and highlights those sort of amber and reddish and magenta purplish colors in and around the freeway interchanges. I've shown the majority of your poor-performing intersections, frankly. They're all concentrated right along there. And in other communities, you'll find some very poor-performing intersections, say in the center of downtown or places like that, or even in some suburban locations where there's a large agglomeration of housing units all trying to get into one facility. But this is the more traditional challenge you have. In terms of opportunities, we're looking for, well, there's going to need to identify ways to reduce vehicle miles traveled, strategies to reduce driving alone, and there's a comprehensive menu of things, and we're going to talk about some of those coming right up. Transportation demand management, parking, other modes, transit, bicycles, pedestrians, land use strategies. And these all can go towards addressing that freeway interchange congestion that we talked about. Auto parking, these are some statistics and numbers to give you a feel for the nature and the cost of parking. There's a great deal of information about this in the Existing Conditions Report, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this right now. The policies, new development, there are minimum requirements, of course, and the CBD, they have been modified in order to address other goals and objectives related to land use and transportation in the CBD. Issues and opportunities, some issues related to free off-street parking, people hunting for parking nearby, paid parking is a very typical community problem where we see this in communities, every place we look. If you have downtown parking or other parking that costs money and there's nearby residential areas or even other areas that the parking's free, you're going to find people hunting for that first. It's just a, it's sort of a universal phenomenon. Public transit, again, I won't spend a lot of time recapping for you the characteristics of the community. There's a, one of the things that jumps out, though, is that Santa Barbara does have very, very good ridership for the size and the nature of the service area population. So it would stack up well in terms of the types of measures that transit planners would look at when they're evaluating the effectiveness, spare box ratios, daily ridership, and they have tons of different ways that they look at that. But Santa Barbara does, frankly, very well, if you would compare it to other communities, especially communities that have a socioeconomic characteristics where you've got, frankly, you know, a good range of different types of incomes and so forth. Existing conditions, again, these are different parts of the characteristics of the community. In terms of issues and opportunities, I've highlighted just a few bullets here about potential opportunities. I'm sure you're familiar with many of these that have been discussed before to address the opportunities that transit might have. Again, transit will play a role in achieving these overarching goals that you would have looking down the road to reduce the number of, even further, single-occupant vehicles, particularly those traveling to and from 101. Bicycling, the bike-friendly attributes, we found that the commute mode share, based on the statistics of comparison, are higher here in Santa Barbara. It exceeds both California and United States averages. So you're getting up into the communities that have been much more successful, and I think there's a number of different factors that go into that, including some very specific improvements that have been made with the community to make bicycling a viable choice for people. And I think if you make it a choice and you put things in place that can go along with things like climate and other things, you're going to have more success, and we see that in Santa Barbara. I think a continuation of these types of policies obviously is going to be beneficial because you've already demonstrated that you can be better than average in terms of achieving bicycling success. Pedestrian conditions, again, when we say commute mode share, you're probably thinking, wow, how many people walk to work? But, well, we do know that it's more than the averages we see for California and the United States. You do have opportunities, obviously, where people live in close enough proximity to their workplaces that they can walk. Issues and opportunities include, obviously, the continuation of ongoing efforts that have been underway. Safe routes to schools is an area that is getting a lot more attention now and is getting a lot more funding as well. The new complete streets initiatives that are underway at the federal level are going to be beneficial as well for both bikes, Peds, and transit, in fact. In terms of transportation demand management, plans are in place for some of the projects. It's been a, there's been a history in Santa Barbara of identifying opportunities for TDM, and if you can think of TDM as, part of its efforts are related to alternative work hours, coming to work earlier, leaving later, having flex schedules where people take Friday off, those kind of things. But obviously, it's important to have a TDM program that can really hone in on where you've had some success with bicycles, pedestrians, and transit. So obviously, if you're getting people out of their single-occupant cars, you're putting them someplace, and the TDM program certainly can do that by working in partnership with other things. And in terms of issues and opportunities, there's a few suggestions here, and again, I'm going to just show those to you and keep going. In terms of street types, the measures, as we discussed last time, right now in the community focus on automobile level of service. At this time, there aren't performance measures yet for other modes. Also, the classification system that you use in Santa Barbara is a traditional one that identifies and classifies streets according to where they are in the roadway network and how much traffic they carry. So in terms of issues and opportunities, there's the opportunity during this process to take a look at other types of performance measures, other grades to add on the report card, other than just level of service. We've shown some of those that are currently used, quality of service, mobility measures. Last time, I talked about travel time and a number of other things as well that you can consider. And just real briefly, again, this is very well documented in the report. Where do the funding sources come from to make these things happen? What's going on right now in terms of regional sources? If you're driving on 101, you can see some of that money in operation right now, hoping that people actually do drive 55 through that construction zone. Penning and plan improvements, I won't go into a lot of detail about these. There's a combination of improvements planned and programmed for many of the modes, in fact, including some planned and proposed at the larger scale, obviously, at the regional level as well. So in summary, the overall issues and opportunities for Santa Barbara in the context of Plan Santa Barbara, opportunities to look at all modes, come up with what you would regard it to be, performance measures from all modes. As you've seen, you're starting at a good base, and you have a good baseline upon which to build in terms of the success you've already demonstrated that you can have. Looking at what you can do in the short and medium and long term, we view that as important so that you can see some nearer-term results of your efforts and investments. So why don't I do this? Let me just pause for a moment, take a breath, and ask if there are any clarification questions just on the material that I just covered? And we can certainly ask them at the end, too. All right, well, let's keep moving. At the last session on In May, we talked to you, and I won't repeat it, in the big scheme of things about what models are about, where they come from, how we build them, how we use them. We gave you kind of a flavor for that. So I'm not going to go back and re-articulate those. So the following slides are presented in the context of what you already saw, and we had a good exchange, and I think you got some good questions, and hopefully, I provided some clarification that helped. The first thing I want to talk about in the model, remember, we talked about traffic analysis zones? The basic theme of the zones that we developed for the Santa Barbara model was to take the existing model from Santa Barbara, the SB CAG model, and to really refine it and disaggregate it. And why do we do that? Well, this model is intended to be able to provide answers at the intersection level. Now, to be successful at the intersection level, you're going to have to have a lot more detail than a regional model, which can't really provide those answers for you in the first place. I've got a graphic way over there that shows the entire model structure, and I'm going to show you in a moment just how that kind of plays out. But the zones need to be fine-grained enough to get turning movements and intersections accurate, and that means you've got to have a lot of them. We went from 87 zones in this modeling area to 460, which is a, it's a lot more, but it's necessary. And that's not to say that the regional model is inadequate in Santa Barbara, it's just a different tool, that you rely on more for 101 than you're going to require for Garden Street, for example. So here's a, this is the same as the board you see over there. You can see there's a great deal of detail. In the downtown area, we're basically block by block. And in order to be even more accurate, what we've done is, in the downtown blocks, the actual way that traffic, and you remember before I talked, I used that word "centroid connector" for how traffic simulates cars getting onto the street. The way we've set up the downtown so that the driveways from parking lots, for example, are actually in the model itself. So if you look at how, this is, I'm going to show you two things back-to-back. This is the SB CAG model for downtown, and this is the Santa Barbara model. So in order to get to this level of detail, you just have to go to a great deal more sophistication. And this was greatly aided by the exhaustive efforts of the staff to get us parcel-based land use assumptions for every single parcel, which we then aggregate up to the traffic analysis zones and run the model. So how does all that data that we collected in the Existing Conditions Report, how did it inform the model development? Well, let's look at, some of the broad-based characteristics inform the model. We know, for example, that Santa Barbara has fewer vehicle trips per employee than average, the higher carpool rates, that's reflected in our modeling effort. You know, remember, we talked about jobs housing, and while you do have a decent balance, it's not perfect. So in that sense, to the extent that there is an imbalance, not everybody who lives in Santa Barbara can work here, they're commuting both ways, obviously. And you're also having people who work here and can't live here, or don't want to, or for whatever reason. So you do have more and longer commutes. Also, if you look at, we did a tremendous amount of data collection that's now in the model related to traffic counts, and we've given you the results of all that work for all the, what we call the study intersections in the community and surrounding areas. Lots of parking data. We have a great deal of information about ownership of automobiles by different land use categories for the community, and that's all been very helpful for us in the model. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. The model has very accurate, detailed information about how many lanes, what the speeds are on all of your streets, the capacities. It includes the fact that you can't make left turns whenever you want on State Street so that those are accurately modeled in the network itself. The effect and the success you've had with bikes and Peds and transit are, in fact, built in to these resulting vehicular trip rates that are in our model. What are some of the big-picture things that we found out about Santa Barbara that are now in the model? Well, the central business district, these are intuitive, but they are different enough that what we've done is we've divided the model area into four, what we call, area types, and I won't go into a lot of detail, but just to tell you that there was enough difference in this modeling structure that we have different sets of trip rates depending upon the modeling area, and here's why. In the central business district, obviously, there's more parking and walking, there's the opportunity to link trips together, there are fewer residential uses. As you get a little bit farther outside of the grid into the west side, these areas are not as dense, they do have more driving, but the trips tend to be shorter than when you move out to the periphery. There are obviously fewer non-residential uses, there's mostly auto trips out there, and they're generally longer as well. So if you can think that the model, what it's doing is it's generating not just trips, but it's also how far are these trips going, and it varies by land use type. Auto ownership here differs in these areas as well, and we know based on years and years and years of research that if you want to predict trip generation, a couple of good ways are the income level of the household, the type of the household in terms of the size and the type of the unit. People with three-car garages tend to have more cars and drive more than people downtown in an apartment that maybe have one parking space. I know it sounds fairly obvious, but the model needs to know about that stuff in order to be more accurate. Now, what I did, what I wanted to do is just give you a feel for what, how things are looking. We're right now in the stage of finishing up what we call the calibration and validation of the Santa Barbara model. The daily is just about there, we're fine-tuning the AM and PM peak. And so here's what we're, here's some numbers, and again, I put together this slide at kind of the last minute, so there's some abbreviations here that I can help you with that might not be as evident. In terms of single-family, you're all familiar, I know, if you're a commissioner, that the typical single-family residential rate, 10 trips per day, that's one of the most stable rates that, in Santa Barbara, what we've found is there's a range from 8.23, that's pretty specific, but, to 11.5. Multifamily, the ITE range, again, there's a lot of range for ITE for multifamily because they've got townhouses, they've got apartments, they've got condominiums, and there's a great deal of confusion, actually, about how to classify. But what we found in Santa Barbara, there's a range from 3.1 all the way up to 9.86. The retail rates, interestingly, tend to be lower downtown than the traditional ITE trip generation rates. So let's say you just were doing a traffic impact study, this is really where the rubber meets the road. If you pulled out the ITE rate for retail, you don't get a choice, really, between, a wide choice between the types of retail. However, what this model's able to do is tell us more about how these rates are coming together to calibrate and validate. So we're getting rates that differ from the ITE rates. The office rates, so far, we're seeing are a little bit higher per square foot per day than the ITE rates. These are preliminary, though. What we're going to do is we'll be refining the calibration and validation, we'll look at AM and PM, and then we'll also look at the future to look back on these and make sure that we're honing in on them. But all of the information in that Existing Conditions Report that we've talked about is pouring into the model now, and these are sort of some of the preliminary results we're getting. Now, let's talk about future years. The Existing Conditions provides for the information we need to calibrate and validate the model. But then, as I mentioned earlier, what we're going to use the model for, what's more interesting to you, you obviously want a calibrated and validated model, and we'll calibrate and validate so that it achieves industry standard and exceeds those standards for being a tool that we can all trust. But what we're really interested in is the future, the horizon year, comparing today to the future, comparing a base case, if you just, for example, the California Environmental Quality Act requires you look at the no project. So the no project in this case would be Santa Barbara 20 or 30 years in the future, that's an extrapolation of the land use assumptions that are currently in place, and all the plans and policies and programs. Now, we're going to look at that, but then you're going to also want to say, okay, that's our base case, but what if, going way back to some of those things we talked about earlier in the presentation, related to how could we get vehicle miles traveled lower? How could we get more biking and walking in the downtown? How can we change parking so that we can have it more efficient in terms of reducing people hunting for parking? Those kind of things. Well, in the future, what we're going to do, these are some of the things we're going to look at. I think you remember I talked about the four Ds, density, design, diversity, and destinations. What we're going to do is, we're going to look at the future land use and policies and programs in Santa Barbara and say, how are these different than your base case, and what will that do to affect trip generation in the community? So if you can think of, at the base year, we now have customized trip generation characteristics for Santa Barbara, differentiated in four different parts of your community. Now, in the future, we're going to say, well, we have some great ideas about how we're going to reduce trips, we'll plug that in, and we'll tell you what the effect is. What's the effect of, how much mode shift did we get away from single-occupant cars? How effective is TDM? What if we did this? What kind of an effect could it have? There's been a lot of questions about fuel price changes. In the modeling world, as Mark can tell you, we don't know a whole lot about, you know, how travelers are going to respond to changes in gas prices, but whatever we know at the time, we're going to try and take a look at and build in. Other policies and programs and regulatory changes as well will be part of the future years. In the future, obviously, land use is going to be different. There's development and redevelopment that will occur within the physical boundaries of Santa Barbara plus the surrounding area, plus Santa Barbara and Ventura County and the whole south coast and all of the modeling area. There's going to be changes in the freeway system and commuter types of transit, both fixed guideway and buses. There may be changes that you look at in the state street corridor, how is that going to affect things? As well as, one of the things we do know is that changes that you have to the predominant, or let's say, the mix of land uses you have in residential right now, the proportion that single-family, multifamily, if that changes in the future, if that mix changes, what difference will that make? And this model is going to allow us to be pretty detailed and specific, and we'll be, it's sensitive enough to tell you what the effect is of those types of changes compared to, say, a base case, and compared to how it differs from the SB CAG averages as well. So getting into next steps, what we're going to look at is, we're looking at, obviously, the opportunities to reduce congestion, you know, we've talked about that. What new strategies might be applicable to the types of land uses and the amount of changes that it can actually occur in Santa Barbara from a land use point of view? What's the range of reductions that we think are realistic? What does the evidence say so far about going from X units to acre, X units per acre to X plus some percent units to the acre? How much is that going to change the number of people that drive their cars during the peak hour? Well, we're going to be able to model all those things and take a look at them. Well, we're going to be able to model all those things and take a look at them. One of the, if we can think back, that thematically, you want to do the best you can at reducing the amount of vehicle miles traveled, that's a huge emphasis, obviously, nationally now, and in, in California as well, there's some mandates now that, that the plan and the, the plan, and more importantly, the environmental report, impact report, is going to have to document what you've done to achieve 1990 CO2 levels by 2020. And that's not just Santa Barbara, that's all, every jurisdiction in California has to do that. And so we'll quantify for you, for each of the scenarios that you look at, where you are in terms of vehicle miles traveled, where you are in terms of CO2 emissions, and translate that into, and there's a lot of debate over actually how that's going to play out. AB 32 is now law, we, we're not real, no one's for certain how specifically, but we do know enough to know that they want you to quantify those things and have in your plan measures that you believe are addressing the whole issue of gas, greenhouse gas emissions. And if you don't look at it and you don't document it, it's very likely that you're going to get a letter from the Attorney General saying, go back, because they've already written seven or eight of those letters, including the, you know, the really well-known one for Santa Barbara County, which got really called on the carpet. So anyway, that's, that's a, a really quick, and I, and I hope, I didn't go too long or too fast with that, but I wanted just to give you a sense of where we were, what we're doing, what we're going to use it for. Hopefully, I've answered your, you know, most of those questions about, you know, how this model is going to inform the decision-making process. What I should close with is just tell you that the model itself, it's kind of like going to the doctor, and the doctor diagnoses for you what you have. What the model can do is, it can tell you what you have, but it can't tell you how to, what, what your prescription should be, and should you get exercise, and all those kinds of things. That's up to you all to craft the policies and programs that address what the model informs you. So I don't want us to think that the model answers those policy questions, it informs though, and, and you've got a tool now that's sophisticated enough and sensitive enough that you can ask it those kinds of questions, see what the results are, and then make some informed decisions about what that means to you and what you think you need to do from that point on. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Practicing medicine for a reason.
Absolutely.
And I get the feeling that you could have talked on this subject all night long, and I appreciate you not doing that. I'll be the first to admit some of this is over my head, so anyone else who feels that way can speak up for themselves. Order of the meeting here, we have some public speakers, public comments, but before we do that, are there any burning questions that members of the commission or, or committee members? Yes, go ahead.
First, a small question. You mentioned that Milpus Street was slightly more impacted than Outer State Street as far as traffic generation. That's interesting. It's how much more? And it was Outer State Street that the number was around, right? It was more than 44 or 45%?
Yeah, let me, I'll get you, I can follow up on that and give you the precise numbers, because we do have very specific information about that, but I'll get that for you.
Okay, and I certainly appreciate the degree of sophistication that you're, you're approaching this with, but I, but the question I have is, when are we going to have the model?
Well, the model, the model is, it's ready. It's, it's running right now, we're, within a day, we'll have it what we consider to be calibrated and validated, and so now what we'll do is we'll work with the staff on the existing land use, I'm sorry, the future horizon year land use and plug that in. So it's, it's ready for use.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize for needing to leave a little early tonight, but I just have one question, and I know Mr. Dayton has put in a considerable amount of effort in identifying trends and issues in the conditions, trends and influence, issues report that we prepared, that he prepared and staff prepared three years ago. I'm, I'm probably misinterpreting what our speaker said in terms of this model not being able to be used in a prescriptive manner, and I'm hoping to get some assurances that we will be able to go beyond simple density modifications to get into unit size and modal splits, and how we can really use this model to develop a coherent and comprehensive policy that links circulation, mobility, and land use together. Am I optimistic?
No, you are correct. The, the, the resources that have been put into this model are intended to allow that very level of sensitivity. The traditional travel demand modeling approach would, would be, would be blind to a lot of those things, but we've used an approach where we want it to be sensitive to more than just land use changes. We want it, want it to be sensitive to, well, what would happen if we, if we wind the area that we charge for parking? How's that going to change conditions downtown? What would happen if we made a, if we made a TDM more aggressive? That's exactly what it can do. It can do more than tell you to take two aspirin and, you know, call me in the morning. It just won't tell you if that's the right thing to do, but it'll give you all those results.
Thank you.
And I filled the note earlier, I was, I'm planning on after public comment going down the table, so if you have questions and comments and hold them off till later, I'm going to do that too, so Commissioner Thompson.
Well, we can hold off the questions till later if you want, or it's not a burning question.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Jacobs.
Thanks very much. I, I'm still trying to unravel the population count versus the trips count, and how those two are related, because we start off with the statement that there's a population of 90,000 in Santa Barbara, but every day 20 to 30,000 other people are in town, so we have a kind of a daytime city and a nighttime city. How does the model work with that? Do we just ignore population and only talk about car trips? Is that what it comes down to?
Well, the, the, the model, what it's looking at is, is, it's looking at the, the land use that's within the community, but it's balancing that with the actual counts of cars that we see during the day, during the evening peak, and during the morning peak. So it captures not just your nighttime population, but also the influx of people coming in, and it does that in two ways, and, and that's a good question, because I didn't talk about. It also includes trip making, it includes trips that occur from one place in Santa Barbara to another place, trips that occur from Santa Barbara to other places, and vice versa, and trips that just drive through. But you calibrate and validate the model, and I only talked about the trip generation for your land uses, but you also validate what we call the surrounding, kind of a cordon line, to balance those up and down till we get that right as well, and that's where we rely as a starting point on the SB CAG model. It's got a big model structure, and it knows how many people drove through the community, how many, you know, those types of trips as well. So that's how it all sort of comes together.
And, and then my, my second comment is, we're here talking about transportation today, but part of the reason for talking about it in August is that the city is looking at its land use element and its housing element on a very strict deadline, and the hope is that we will have this transportation model to help us with some, some of those decisions. So following up on Commissioner Justice's very polite question is, when will we actually be able to, to ask a question like, if we have a dedicated transit lane on Upper State Street, how will that influence our land use decisions? Those kinds of, of actual questions. Is it a month away? Is it two months away? Are we almost ready? We have a planning commission meeting on September 10th, where we're, we're starting to move forward on this, and I would love to know how we might get some information.
Asking the staff.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Charmaine Jacobs, what we'll have to do is, we have to get the questions first. So I, I, you can, I definitely, if, if you have an interest in a question that you want to ask, let's get it, let's get it in our minds now and on our notepads, and, and then the other thing is, when we come out with the, the general plan framework and the policies that are being suggested, if, you know, those would obviously be baseline questions that, if they play out in terms of transportation that we'd want to answer, but if there's, there are other questions, you know, we want to hear them to see if, if they apply and, and how, how we can go ahead and answer that question.
We've received our once-nightly Transportation and Circulation Committee microphone check question from up above, so if anybody's microphone is on, we're getting a little chatter on the air, so you just check your mics really quickly for me, please. Thank you.
Process question where we are.
Okay.
So this presentation was sort of a mix of the status of the model as well as our existing conditions report. That's fine. What I'm still a little concerned about is, last time you all were here and learned not to assume we're all from UCLA, we had lots of comments and questions and direction, which you acknowledged as a committee with the best stuff, the most stuff you've ever seen. So I'd like to know where in this process, or can we verify that all those ideas are now in your model? Because what I'm hearing is, you're ready now to run it, and so I hope all that stuff is in there, but we don't seem to have a window anymore to sort of get a presentation of what's in the model before you've run it and the window's closed.
Well, the, the presentation tonight was intended to, to show you what's in the, what's in the calibrated and validated Santa Barbara model. And everything that you ask about related to could, with the model for existing conditions, would it include sensitivity to, to trips, trip generation types, that was one of the most fundamental things you wanted to make sure of. And as I indicated, we have these four specific area types within Santa Barbara, and we have customized trip rates, and I gave you some examples for Santa Barbara, so we have achieved that. A lot of your questions were related to the future and how the model would treat those things. Those will be part of the future model runs, because that's where we implement changes and ideas that you have that vary from the status quo. So those I can't, I can only tell you, we will, we will include them, the slide I had about the four Ds, about parking, about TDM, bikes, peds, transit, all those will, will be put into the future as well. So I hope that it answers, you know, we talked about fuel prices, can we look at those kinds of things? And the answer is yes.
Okay, I guess I'm hearing there's a great deal of detail in the model, and we'll get to see all that once, once we turn the switch on. We have public comment now, I have six speaker slips. Miki Flax is my first listed speaker. I'm going to try to limit comments to about three minutes tonight, Miki, so if you could please try to adhere to that timeline, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Miki Flax, I walked here today, and will walk home. I'm thrilled beyond belief at this model, because it's confirming, seems to be the preliminary results, confirming what I've been arguing till I was blue in the face for years now, namely that a residential unit is, A, is not the same as unit B if the income, with respect to car trips generated, if the income level of the two units is different. And ITE numbers, which is what planners have traditionally used, what commissions rely on, do not reflect that, and that is a pity. I would suggest that planners, if they already haven't, walk around or even drive around the streets of Santa Barbara during the commuting rush hours to see how many low-income workers are commuting by bicycle. That's what accounts for the fact that we have better rates than everybody else, and I think if we make use of this model to, to have it inform our planning in terms of what kind of structures we have where, then it will be terrific, because I will have proven right, and that's the most important thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Miki. Chris Schaefer is the next speaker, followed by Ralph Furtig.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you. My name is Chris Schaefer, I'm with Caltrans, District 5 in San Luis Obispo, and I just got, this past week was able to read through your existing conditions report. Haven't done a whole lot with the model, because I'm not a modeler, and we're just, we're probably about two or three days late on starting to get interacted with the city on your, on your great effort. Just want to say that all the work that's gone into creating the baseline conditions is, can't be overemphasized, because as the speaker has said, that's what's going to drive your analysis for the future. One of the things that we've noticed in looking at the baseline report is that while on page one and page 24, there's discussion of, of the regional traffic patterns, or that that is a high priority, or high demand for regional travel is one of the most significant transportation challenges facing the city, there's not a lot of analysis presented on what the current condition is of the freeway, as far as being on paper, and we would like to see a little bit more on that. I'm hoping also, on page two of the report in, in the presenter's presentation tonight on regional partners, didn't appear as the Department of Transportation was included on that, and we would dearly love to work with the city in going forward with your plan. Because in phase, in the next phase, as local strategies and regional strategies, strategies are discussed, I think that what we'll start looking at, Caltrans is, and actually nationwide, you know, the economic situations are that expansion of facilities of this scale is not that practical. And in fact, there's not, Highway 101 in motion, that study, there's, there's really, there is no discussion on 101 north of Milpus. It focuses on Milpus South and on a rail service for commuters. So what's to be done in the next 20 years? What the presenter tonight talked a lot about was TDM, or Traffic Demand Management. One of the things that Departments of Transportation around the nation are looking more and more at is system management, or TSM, Transportation System Management. And one of the things, as urban as it sounds, one of the, the things that we really need, the department and the city need to work with as we go forward is what happens when system management, or intelligent system management systems are placed onto the freeway facility? And we commonly refer to that as ramp metering, because that is the direction that in, throughout the state, in all other states, that's where we're going because of economics, because of, you know, we don't want to just engineer and widen our way out of congestion. And so I think we need, over the next 20 years, that's something that we're going to have to be talking about quite a bit. And that impinges on funding, as the department is going more towards system management, funding is going to be tied more and more to system management, whether it's federal funding or state funding. And so as we develop corridor system management plans, not only the department, the department can't just work in a vacuum, it has to work with our constituents and with our, with our partners. It's going to be both a benefit to, to, to both of us. And that's all I have, sir. Thanks.
Chairman Taber and Myers and members of the commission and members of the committee, I'm Ralph Furtig, I'm president of the Santa Barbara Bicycle Coalition, and I have a little letter that I passed out to everybody here. I think the important thing is that times are definitely changing. There's a graph in there which has recent data from the Federal Highway Administration, which shows that over the last 25 years, there has been an asymptotic increase up until three years ago in the number of vehicle miles traveled in the United States, and the last two years it's been stable, and this year it dropped 5%, which is very notable. What's probably more important than the 5% is that the number of fatal crashes that have occurred between last year and this year have dropped 20%. And this is because the demographics that are most affected by the higher gas prices are the old and the young, who are much higher, have much higher rates of crashes. I just read today that in New Zealand, they're, that they're having the same thing happen from their gas prices that we are, and they're projecting that the number of vehicle kilometers -- prices that we are, and they're projecting that the number of vehicle kilometers traveled in New Zealand will decrease through 2016, and then it will increase incrementally depending on their population growth. I don't know whether the same thing is going to happen in the United States or here, but at least they're projecting a continuing increase that isn't just a one-time blip, but this is a new trend that we really should be looking at in looking at the data and hopefully not extrapolating from numbers which are obsolete or obsolescent. Two other comments that I have, one is that we're looking in efficiency and climate change, energy and climate change. The main thing that was discussed in the Policy Options Report was buildings and the energy efficiency, and then, but we missed out on the major energy thing, which is transportation. Thirty-seven percent of our energy within Santa Barbara County, according to the CEC, goes to buildings, but 48%, about a third more, goes to transportation. This is totally neglected and should be certainly considered if we're going to reduce energy use. And the same for climate change. Transportation is probably the major one, and I certainly want to point out that walking and bicycling have no CO2 emissions, and they're ideal for improving our climate. One other note that I, for every five people who are walking in the city of Santa Barbara, there's one person on a bicycle. It's like five to one, so it is a very substantial number of people who are bicycling around our city. Final thing is that we don't have a mobility count. This is something that Boulder, Colorado, for example, has had for, I think, over a decade, where they track the number of trips, how they're done, what kind they are, and the mode that people use, that we don't know what's really changing, and in order to look at the future and figure out what different programs and what things we do, what their effect will be, we really want to know and be able to measure it and adjust accordingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hernadi, next, followed by Bill Marks.
Good evening, chairs and members of the Planning Commission and the Transportation and Circulation Committee. I am Paul Hernadi. Is the microphone positioned okay? I am Paul Hernadi, speaking tonight for the Citizens Planning Association's Comprehensive Planning Committee. In the interest of saving time, I will summarize rather than read the letter we recently submitted to you. I hope everybody has received a copy. Our committee learned a lot from the consultant's existing conditions report, but we also noted the report's almost complete reliance on such measurements of traffic congestion as average daily traffic figures on selected road segments and level of service grades A through F based on intersection turning movement counts. Obviously, the microdevelopment of the model will remedy some of that. Those measurements, known as ADTs and LOSs, are obviously important, yet the alphabet soup fails to reflect the chunky brew of actual mid-block congestion, which gives the public indigestion in heavily traveled commercial areas. Indeed, the existing conditions report gives us no details about such factors of congestion as the number of and purpose of curb cuts between intersections, the distance between intersections and major curb cuts, the distance between intersections and bus stops, the respective road share of different types of motor vehicles, cars, SUVs, trucks, buses, 18-wheelers, and last but not least, the typical number of bicycles, wheelchairs, and pedestrians crossing at a particular intersection. We urge that the next phase of traffic modeling address those and other significant factors of congestion. Especially along commercial corridors, the ADT and LOS numbers should be correlated with the typical length of time it takes to travel from one intersection to the next at various times of the day and on different days of the week, with particular attention, I may add, to the 52 Fridays of the year and the eight peak shopping weeks between mid-November and mid-January. As for pedestrian circulation, the waiting time before crossing particular intersections should also be considered as a measure of traffic congestion. Furthermore, the figures about pedestrian-involved accidents, 428 between 1998 and 2002, should please be updated with data covering the last five or six years, because there surely have been quite a few of those accidents. Our second, I will be shorter about the second set of concerns that we have, it has to do with some discrepancies between the data presented in the present report and the data presented in last year's Upper State Street Traffic, Circulation, and Parking Study, prepared by another consultant. Our letter documents some of the most striking discrepancies in a lengthy add note. Suffice it to say tonight that last year's consultant came up with 30,800 and 32,000 trips as the average daily traffic in some segments of Upper State Street. By contrast, the highest average daily traffic volume on Upper State Street is listed by this year's consultant as 21,600 trips, about 10,000 different. Similar discrepancies exist between the good or not-so-good letter grades, respectively assigned by the two studies, to the level of service at some of the very same intersections. To conclude, we trust that the next phase of transportation modeling will be scrupulously based on the most reliable data available. Also, when two sets of data gathered within one year or so are in conflict, some explanation should be given why one set rather than the other has been selected for inclusion. Our committee looks forward with great interest to future developments in the current transportation modeling process. Thank you very much for your attention.
Bill Marks, next speaker, and the last slip I have is Courtney Dietz.
I am Bill Marks, and I'm speaking for the Santa Barbara League of Women Voters. I submitted a single printed copy of my remarks. We have read the TECR, the Existing Conditions Report, and it contains much good information, including the fact that Santa Barbs beat the national averages for biking and walking. As to funding, the League has a long history of supporting funding for transportation, including alternative means of transportation. We signed the ballot arguments for the 1990 Measure D, and we have just signed the arguments for the new Measure A. We recognize that the city of Santa Barbara, along with other jurisdictions, badly needs the money this will produce from a sales tax and the matching funds it will generate in order to maintain the roads, bike lanes, and other transportation options. However, we are not certain that the total funding described will be adequate for all the planned improvements to handle new development. With costs of bus service increasing, more funding may be required for transit. As to assumptions, we are troubled by several of the assumptions that are made in this report. The assumption should not be made that the high-density housing along transit corridors will be affordable for the workforce. So far, all we have as evidence is that the private sector will build luxury condos with 15% workforce units as required under the Inclusionary Ordinance. This will not help the majority of the commuters or the majority of the workforce. Only the housing authority produces units that are more affordable. Without new strategies to produce the affordable units we need, Santa Barbara will be in a worse situation than we are in now. Our resources will be used up for luxury units for residents who do not work. They will generate the need for more service workers who cannot afford to live here. Our existing workforce will continue to have to commute, causing even more congestion on our already impacted intersections. The report makes clear that ownership and the number of automobiles owned are tied to income. However, it does not develop this further and address the effects of the number of cars and their use by owners of the large luxury condos that are being built. While some of these residents may use the shuttle and walk some of the time, there is no question that the residents of these luxury condos would probably have two cars and use them. What guarantee do we have that the people living in units will take alternative means of transportation? Nowhere is there any reference to recent studies that have shown that even if housing units are located on transit corridors, many residents do not use public transportation because it does not go to their destination. There is no evidence from projects we already have built to show existing ridership patterns. We are concerned that the city is assuming that the residents of these units will take public transit, bike, or walk. But if they do not, we will be faced with greater congestion than now exists. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Courtney Dietz. If there's anyone else who hasn't a chance to fill out a speaker slip who wants to, now is your last chance.
Good evening. My name is Courtney Dietz. I'm the project director for Santa Barbara Walks, a project of the Coalition for Sustainable Transportation. Santa Barbara Walks is motivated by the premise that many of us are pedestrians, whether we commute by bus, train, car, or on foot. We often find that we need to walk from bus stops, from the parking lot, or from where we park our bike. It's important to note that the data in the existing conditions report states that over half of the households here in Santa Barbara own zero or one car. I believe that rising fuel costs are forcing even more people and encouraging others to leave their cars at home and explore other modes of travel. Additionally, as noted, people in Santa Barbara walk to work more than two times the state and the national averages. I believe these numbers will only increase into the future, and we must support the increasing number of non-drivers in our community. Additionally, we need to consider all users of the transportation system. And while essential for pedestrian safety, it's not just about crosswalks and sidewalks anymore. It's where people work in relation to where they live, it's the location of markets and stores within neighborhoods, it's the forward-thinking policies that we must craft in order to support our community that is choosing more and more every day to walk as part of their daily transit needs. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that concludes our public comments at this time. Is there a need for a quick break, or we want to move on? Let's move on. I promised moved down the table, taking comments. Commissioner Thompson, you want to begin?
Okay, thank you. I guess I've got several questions for staff and for Mr. Welsh, so... Starting out, in your discussion, you had a slide that talked about the variations from the ITE numbers that you have developed for specific uses, land uses in Santa Barbara. Could you describe how those came about, how you got the data that went into that?
Yes.
Is this a matter of sending out vast quantities of guys to do traffic counts, or...
Well, what we did is we, when you, the initial trip generation rates that we start with, to calibrate and validate the model, to run what's called the trip generation stage of the model, are based on two or three sources. We use a combination of ITE trip rates, we use some from the SB-CAG model, and we use some others from California that we have found to be, that we would expect to be characteristic in Santa Barbara. And then what we do is, the actual inputs of land use and the roadway network in terms of its traffic counts, that's what you have to, you have to match what you see on the ground with the model. That's its whole test.
So you keep tweaking the numbers until you get the result that matches the real world.
That's correct. And one of, there's a, there's a number of different dials and things you can adjust in the model. One of the keys is the trip generation step. And what we found in Santa Barbara is that we needed to have essentially four different sets of rates for land use types within the community to get the model to reflect what's on the ground on the streets. And so you start with those rates, and then you keep refining till you get to the actual rates that are appropriate here.
What is your, the average runtime for a scenario? Is this something that you can plug in, an assumption, and a change land use and get a quick return, or is this something that takes a long time to set up and then run for a long while on the computer before you get a result? Or is it quick?
The computer, yeah, the computer time won't be an issue. The models run, the Santa Barbara model runs in about 10 minutes. It's the, it depends on the level of sophistication that you'd like to see in the, what we call measures of effectiveness and the data that comes out of the model. So if you wanted to know intersection level of service for all 50 intersections, that would take longer than for us just to tell you some general characteristics. For example, if all you wanted to know was vehicle miles traveled, we can do that pretty quick. You could almost do it interactively at a session if you set it up right. Some of the more detailed outputs from the model could take a little bit longer, but it won't be a function of how long the model itself takes to physically run on the computer.
So theoretically, would be possible then to put in a change in a particular land use in one of your zones and get a readout almost real time as to the result of that change?
In terms of, you can see, yeah, you can see within minutes how that particular land use change will affect the surrounding network, then it's just a question of how many of the other types of calculations do you like, do you want to see?
What's the output? What kind of an output do we get? Graphic, visual, tabular?
Well, you can get a range of things. You can get, the thing that, about the model that we're using here, TransCAD, is it's heavily GIS-based. So, for example, if you run the model, you'll get, you can say, if you, let's say you run the model for a particular project downtown, and you want to see where the trips are coming to and going from, we can produce very quickly a plot that you can look at that shows how thick the streets are, will show how many cars, and you know how you can kind of envision them dissipating as you get farther. Those kinds of graphic outputs can be done. It can produce a number of different reporting sets of numbers for the, for the performance of the transportation system very quickly. So there's a combination of graphic output as well as static measures of effectiveness, travel times, and levels of service, and other measures that you may choose. Then if you want, and you want to go into more detail, you can take that output and move it directly into, say, a more sophisticated analysis tool. Say you wanted to look really detailed at a couple of blocks. The model's data can be moved directly over there without re-entering it, for example. And you may have seen in one of your public presentations, the use of simulation where you actually see the cars moving up and down the streets, you can identify, that can be done from the output of the model.
Yeah. Or maybe street pattern changes from green to yellow to red based upon the input you put in there, so you know where to look for the red problems?
That's exactly right.
What about capturing the movement within the city once the large number of daily commuters are in the city? Is there a way in the model that it captures the internal movements between work and lunch and work and errands and walking around, or driving over to the shopping mall and those kind of movements? Are those captured for the non-residents?
Well, the model is currently set up to have three basic time periods: daily, the morning busy hour, and the evening busy hour. And it presents a snapshot of conditions during those times. It would require the collection of additional traffic count data, say if you wanted to do a midday model or a Saturday model. Those trip generating characteristics are in fact different than they are during the morning and the afternoon peaks.
Would it be captured in the daily data?
The daily data is giving you a sense of the 24-hour total, and then you could look, for example, if you wanted to, at a profile from the counts, for example, of how the traffic's behaving on a daily basis.
Okay. What you just said about the AM and PM peaks, in Upper State Street, I know there are a lot of people that have come to me and said that one of the worst times is around 11:30 to 12:30 on Upper State Street, and so I don't know if we're looking into the traffic congestion as it changes during the day on some of these areas like Upper State Street, Milpus, and so on, Gutierrez.
Yeah, generally...
Where it changes, it's not always peaked only at the AM, PM commuting time, but it also has other peaks during the day.
Yeah, the decision that has to be made from a resource point of view is, if you're going to develop recommendations on a citywide basis, generally, while there may be some... going to develop recommendations on a citywide basis, generally, while there may be some specific parts of the city that have differential peaking characteristics, and maybe, and maybe even State Street, could, that could be its worst time of the day, the question would become, though, would you want to run the whole model for midday? Because it's unlikely that most other parts of the community, to the extent that you're trying to identify problems and address the problems, occur midday. So that's the kind of balance you make when you decide how to do the model. If you wanted to do midday, for example, you'd have to come up with trip generation for the middle of the day. And we don't have, we don't have a lot of information, frankly, as an industry, about how that works. So you'd have to do some more studies and research to find out what, how many trips per unit are generated midday, you know, versus daily, an AM, PM peak. That's the constraint.
Okay. I'll quit.
Community member Clop and Gray.
Yeah, I really, I don't have a lot of comments tonight. I'm just looking forward to actually seeing this model, getting, you know, someone give a question and see the answer come out of it. I'm looking forward to that. I guess my one question is, once this model's done, and say a project comes down the pipeline, say like the Circuit City area on Upper State Street, will that model, now, I kind of understand that the city, you're contracted to do this one model, but is it going to be updated continuously, or is that something the city will have to do to have it updated? Because if a big project goes in, the data's going to change.
Absolutely. Community member Keith Coben Gray. The answer is, we'll have the capability of doing that if the city council decides to do that. In other words, we've had this model constructed specifically so it can be a land development tool, tool in the future, that the planning commission can use for environmental reports. However, that does carry a cost, an ongoing cost, to have that tool. So while we've had the consultant develop the model in a way where we can have that choice, that decision hasn't been made yet. So when we get to the end of the, end of the process, and everyone's very happy with how it worked in Plan Santa Barbara, and everyone's still smiling, and the council finds the resources to do it, then I would see us in a, in a position to recommend that. And we'll see if we have the money, and we have to know, understand how much it actually costs, and then we would have that tool at that point.
Okay, great. Thank you. No more questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacob.
Thank you. One of the things that we're hoping to get out of this is a way to shepherd and protect our transportation resources in our city, in our land use planning for our general plan. And the, the city has long recognized that transportation and circulation resources are a limited resource, just like water, just like air quality. And so I'm hoping that we will be finding some solutions and some ways to conserve our traffic capacity, just like we have historically found ways to conserve water usage and improve air quality. So that's the big picture of what I'm looking at. And I want to talk in particular about traffic on Upper State Street, because that's a squeeze spot in our circulation in our city. And the history of the Upper State Street study is one worth noticing because it came from a grassroots effort. And I think we just can't let our citizens down by dropping the ball on the Upper State Street study. The, the way it came about was, we were using the ITE manual, we were looking at peak traffic hours, and we were getting traffic projections that were so out of sync with the common person's experience of being on Upper State Street, that the city council decided to put the money forward for the Upper State Street study. So if we go forward with our transportation model on Upper State Street, just looking at AM and PM peak hours, I think we're wasting money to pursue that without some kind of look at the data that came out of the Upper State Street study, or in some way including at least a midday count. Personally, I'm more interested in travel time counts than in intersection counts. We're really good on the intersections, but the Upper State Street problems happen at mid-block and where driveway and curb cuts are coming out of the traffic. People are trying to cross two-way, three-lane traffic to get in. It's an ongoing mid-block problem. So the sort of things that might resolve, that people have thought might resolve it would be medians, or different kinds of configurations of that corridor. So having said that, I have three scenarios that I would love to see, and, and those scenarios would include intersections, mid-block, and midday travel times. And, and the first one would be the Upper State Street study and some of its options. The option I'm interested in is the dedicated transit lane. That's something that the city council has considered, is thinking about. More data would be very useful and would be immediately used in some decision-making. So the, the dedicated transit lane is something that we could test out in our, our modeling system. Another one that we're looking at is the, the state of Collier Real between Los Pacitas and Mission. Used to be a two-way street, now it's a one-way street. And there's a study, I believe, in progress of how that is working in regards to our hospital and its reconstruction project. So there's another snippet of our traffic pattern that could be looked at. And then the, the neighborhood aspect of it, we've started talking more and more about neighborhood markets and corner markets, and this one may be harder for the traffic model to look at because it's more dispersed throughout the community. But maybe there's a scenario that could be run there to see what the effect of more neighborhood markets and a quarter-mile pedestrian walk shed might produce in some of our neighborhoods. So I'm really interested to see how this program turns out. It's probably not exactly like SimCity, but I, it'll be that exciting for us to, to see some of these scenarios run through. So I really feel we're in good hands here, and I'm looking forward to seeing some concrete scenarios. Thanks. I'll pass this to committee member Boyd.
Thank you. Community member Boyd.
Yes, I have four questions and really a fifth one, which has already been asked in part, but I'd like an answer. First one, will the model be able to measure something like the impact of Measure A not passing? All of the transportation improvements that are assumed in Measure A out to 20, 30 or so? If those don't happen, what will be the impact? And I think it's, that's a very important question that we need an answer to fairly quickly from, from the city standpoint. Those improvements that are basically within the city, or that have a significant impact on the city. Secondly, what about, will the model be able to address the impact of something like a policy change that says no more free parking for city employees, and some other method of, of recovering fees for city employees? And it may be not just necessarily city employees free parking. It might be current free parking in Upper State Street in the La Cumbre Plaza, as opposed to some other means of collecting fees for parking in the parking lot up there, parking lots. Thirdly, will the model be able to address the question of on-street pay parking in the, in the immediate vicinity of the downtown area, or in the immediate vicinity of other larger shopping areas, strip shopping areas? As is the case in many, many cities that I've been to of similar size to Santa Barbara. And then finally, will the model be able to look at the impact of major TDM measures like personalized trip planning, or education of how to make better trips, X amount of dollars spent by the cities on certain kinds of measures? Is it sensitive enough to be able to pick up the impacts of something like that? And then finally, I'd like a clear answer on the question that was raised by one of the individuals about the discrepancies between the traffic data on Upper State Street and your results versus the results from the Upper State Street study. Maybe if you could take that one first?
We'll go ahead and look at the Upper State Street study and see exactly what it is. I suspect it's, you know, the LOS assumptions, and it's something that we need to address. We'll get back to you in more detail exactly what the discrepancies are.
What about the other four policy?
All of the, all of the questions that have been asked so far about what the model can do, it can do all of them, except, with the exception of the midday question.
Except the midday question.
But everything you ask about, can we test that? The answer is yes. We, part of the team we have, Nelson Nygaard, and what they're responsible for assisting with is, is based upon their knowledge and empirical research, what is the, what, if we can measure it, we can model it. And if there's a, if there's a justifiable way to quantify, let's say, the TDM measure, we can model that. The answer is yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All the questions that could possibly have been asked have almost all been asked. I mean, I've checked all my little boxes: retail hours on La Cumbre, Upper State, and Dr. Hernadi's questions, and, you know, good job. So I really don't have a lot of questions, except my one question, which I think was answered, is, is the, when we get the model, or who runs the model? Like, can Rob sit down with the model and run the model? Or does he have to phone you?
Well, the...
We have to send him back to...
Yeah. What do we have, how do we do it? Big screen king of all, right?
The, well, the way, the way that it's current, we're developing it, is it's going to be developed with a very simple, you know, user interface, and you can think of it as like a menu that you'd have when you launch Excel or Word or anything else. Except in this case, it'll say, you know, "Santa Barbara Travel Demand Model," and it'll say, "What do you want to do?" Essentially, the, the user just goes in, and it's, it's actually very easy to make changes to land use into the network. You have to know what you're doing, you know, because you can really, it's very sensitive. And then you just click, "What, what, what results do I want to see? I want to see vehicle miles traveled. I want to see level of service on streets. I want to see trip distribution." You, you check those things, you press go, and it runs. This question for the city that they're evaluating is, when we get to the end, do they wish to bring it in? And we will definitely set it up so that nothing else has to be done. They would just need to acquire the software, get some training, and that, that would be it. They wouldn't have to do any more model development. And it's not the kind of black box that only the cognoscenti can deal with. It's, it's very straightforward.
That's great. Where do I get it? Do you put on a black helmet and have a little game thing with you?
You'd have to spend $10,000 for the, for the software key.
Got it.
And if you've got one of those, yeah.
Yeah, anything goes. Okay, thank you very much. And thank you for, you know, for bearing with us with our questions, and they asked them, so.
One of the things that I'd like just to follow up is, all of the questions that you're asking, what you're essentially doing is you're crafting, you're crafting the guts of scenarios to be tested. And the, the real key is, how do you package those together and say, "This is what we want you to look at." It's always going to be some combination of changes to the transportation supply, changes to land use, and policies and programs. And you sort of wrap those together, you give them a theme, and you say, "Brian, tell us what happens."
Chair Mars?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I appreciate your, your assessment of Santa Barbara and its, and its grade compared to the rest of the world. I had no idea the rest of the world was in such dire straits. And, and as has been mentioned before, you know, we are undergoing a, a rapid look at the general plan update. And there's so many scenarios that come to mind, and some of the ones that are mentioned that are currently hot topics, like the Collier Real situation in Upper State Street, are, are ones that I would look forward to really plugging in soon. But there's a lot of others as well, and I, and I hope that the program doesn't go tilt when we do that, because we really do have a lot that we're, that's on our plate. I would like, I really appreciated the, the letter from Ralph Furtig and his, and his comments, and I'd like answers to those questions. I'd like a description of what a mobility count is, and, and how that might be applied in our, in our case. And also, I assume that, in regard to public safety, that certain aspects can be plugged into this model. For instance, if there's a fire, or, or just a what-if scenario. If we're trying to, to maximize evacuation routes or something like that, if we can, if we can plug those, that data in, or if something shuts down on Highway 101 and we want to find better routes than just State Street for people to travel down, that sort of thing can, can be scenarioized for, for optimum use.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So maybe if you, if you can give just a quick thing on the mobility count?
Yeah, the mobility is really up to the, the folks right here to decide. These are, these are some, in addition to traditionally what we've looked at, intersection level of service, daily traffic volumes, changes in the, in a roadway segment from 10,000 to 10,500. You have at your disposal a number of other mobility measures that you could look at, such as, instead of looking at vehicular, the amount of cars that get through a street, how many people got through a given segment of roadway? If we make policy choices, what, how many pedestrians, how many bicycles, how many transit patrons, and how many vehicles? You can look at travel time, which I, I think a lot of elected and appointed officials are very interested in. What are the consequences of the things that you're proposing in terms of how long it takes me to get from the freeway off-ramp to a given point in the community? We can, we can give you those kinds of results. We can tell you from a more, more subtle types of, of levels of effectiveness that are related to motor vehicles as well, that aren't as commonly seen. It's really, my judgment is, is that it's, it's up to your imagination to, to come up with. I wouldn't, I wouldn't constrain yourself. I would think about, "Brian, can you answer this question for me?" We can give you, I could give you a list. I've got a list that I put together for Santa Monica of 25 different ones that I've seen so far. Different ones that are published and reported, and you probably have some others. Now, I won't overpromise and tell you the model can give you every single one of those, because some of them are very unique to particular types of situations, tolling types of things and that kind of stuff. But there's a whole lot more that are available to you, and it's really up to you to say, "If we have a policy question that's, that can only, that's, that's trying to do X, do you have any kind of measure that can tell us if anything changed?" And the answer, a lot of the times, is going to be yes. This type of model can give you that kind of output.
Community member Cooper.
No comment.
Community member Bradley.
Uh-oh. I'll be, I'll be easier. I probably, most of my questions are probably too technical to ask yourself. I'll, I'll ask you offline sometime. Just a couple more general ones. Let's see. I think the SB CAG model has a mode split model that includes just car and bus, is that right? And then?
Yes.
And then the walk and bike trips are sort of netted out of the trip generation rates?
That's right.
Okay. So you use the same process here? So you can, you can sort of explicitly model competition between car and bus if the, if the bus service is improved? But for things like walk and bike, you have to make sort of assumptions outside the model?
That's, that's right, Mark. What we're going to do is, we're gonna, we're gonna do it while technically outside, we're gonna do it inside. So we're gonna do it at trip generation, which means that we can see the effects on the, on the network during distribution and assignment. So we won't do it off-model. In this case, we're going to build it right in.
Do you have experience from other studies about how different, say, walk, bike network improvements might, how many trips that might draw away from?
We do, yeah. We do have some elasticities related to those, those particular factors that, that we've developed as part of the Sacramento Blueprint process.
Okay. Let's see, in the, so as far as traffic route choice... Let's see, in the, so as far as traffic route choice assignment goes, I guess, it sounds like you have, you can have two methods. One is the sort of standard equilibrium assignment for the whole city region, and then you can micro-simulate within traffic in like a small sub-area, is that right?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And so the main, the sort of region assignment, does that use intersection delays also, or is that just on the links?
The SB CAG model has a limited amount of, the technical term is turn penalties, but our model is very sophisticated with regard to those kinds of things that are on the ground in Santa Barbara. So we've got all the, we don't allow U-turns, and we've got all the turn restrictions in the community accurately modeled. So we've taken it, we've made it more sophisticated from that point of view. We know where at the ramps you can go certain ways. We don't allow people to drive from off-ramp onto on-ramp, which you see happen, but we don't want to allow that to sort of alter the picture.
Okay. Let's see, just one last comment following up on the gentleman from Caltrans. Yeah, I think it'd be pretty important to model different assumptions in the future about what happens to 101, because, you know, if the widening south of Milpus goes through as planned, then it's going to bring a lot, probably bring more peak hour traffic into Santa Barbara that will have to go somewhere. And, yeah, and if ramp metering is a good possibility, then somebody's going to have to build longer ramps somewhere for the cars to sit.
A key assumption will be HOV plus 2, HOV plus 3. That makes a big difference.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. I'm going to go through some pages of our existing conditions report, and then also comment on some of the public letters today. I'm looking at page 6 of the report, in the upper right paragraph, there's something in here about air pollution emissions from cars can offset with traffic, or traffic can offset air pollution. I'd like to get the city right now to stop saying that smog and traffic are somehow interchangeable variables. We could have cars that have really efficient solar panels and they're completely electric run, but the cars still make traffic. So I hope this is a draft and just get that concept out of there, because it appears as a distraction all the time in the public discourse from very high levels within...
I'm glad you brought that up, because one of the things that you're going to have to deal with from a policy point of view that traditionally has not been faced by people in your position is that now we know for, there's a lot more information about how level of service relates to typically on freeways and arterial, how level of service relates to greenhouse gas emissions. So now we have this trade-off between worsening level of service on arterial streets does have documented increases in greenhouse gases. And so it's a new element where jurisdictions were sometimes willing to trade off lower levels of service to achieve other types of goals. And I think those still are important, but you just have to take into consideration the fact that a level of service, see greenhouse gas emissions on an arterial street is generally going to be better than D, E, and F. And that's intuitively, cars, you know, sitting rather than moving on arterial streets is pretty evident, but that's a good point.
Well, anyway, the way it's written now, it starts to pry open a policy trade-off that really shouldn't be happening. No matter how cool the car is, it still takes up space on the ground. And this imply, it starts to imply that if a car doesn't produce smog, therefore it's okay to take up space and congestion. Anyway, just moving along, on page 25, under the opportunity section, and I like the way this is structured, to have these opportunities sort of looking forward. So when those of us on the committee and elsewhere have blathered on for years about the city should do this, well, some of those cool ideas are actually in here now. So the bullet points at the lower right portion of page 25 are getting to the point that the affordability of the housing that may be in the planned Santa Barbara and the income level of people does affect how they drive around on the streets. And we now, we saw plenty of data that generally show that the lower the income in a household, the less they drive. So the dynamic variable, of course, is if we have, if we plan for higher density residences, that mean they're more affordable, so people drive less, but are we getting more people even though each person or each household is driving less? So that's, you know, the variable there. But at least it's in here to start to recognize what I think the planning process has been really avoiding, because it's a tough question. And that complements the comment here from Citizens Planning Association, which is what I was writing at NewsHawk off and on the last couple of weeks, where housing relates to traffic, and I really want your model to be very sensitive to different scenarios. And I plugged that pretty heavy last time you were here. And so we could, you know, envision so many residential units on certain streets, and then think about the people in those and how much they would drive based on the affordability of residential units. But anyway, so we can start to say, well, if the housing policy for affordability is A and B, traffic down there at the intersection will be whatever. So let's make sure that's in your analysis.
It is, because you'll have different trip rates for different residential types and multiplied times the four different areas.
I just think that's going to really dominate the discourse like a year from now. You have sections in the existing conditions about options for transportation demand management, including meters on the street. I think that can be put in your, I'm not citing the page here, but it's in there. I think that could be a really good, seriously studied variable. Is that a way to encourage cars to move along, or does it at least generate more revenue? Or it gets the enforcement vehicles off the street as a vehicle that may block traffic, and instead the enforcement officer can walk and look at the meters, you know, assuming they can get around to where they need to go? And they produce smog. Going to page 50, it's about bicycle traffic flow. I'm interpreting a pretty heavy reliance on the 1974 BikeWay Master Plan and the 1998 Bicycle Master Plan. But I'm wondering, and I encourage the city and its team of consultants to coordinate with the Bicycle Coalition on their data, and whether they have much more recent information, and that can be put into the whole process here, instead of just looking at something that's really more than 10 years old. And while we're speaking of old data, a lot of the analyses in here are referring to the federal census from year 2000, which may, I know it has all the data analyzed lots of different ways, but that still seems old and obsolete. So I don't have any specific ways to fix that, but at least if you all could address it, or maybe if there's trends since then. Certainly, housing and fuel prices are up, and people behave a lot differently now compared with really nine years ago when the census data came out. And my folded pages here. On page 58 are some discussions about getting to the question, at least I vent about in these meetings, is how can pricing of downtown car parking and the availability of downtown parking relate to how people behave? So I'd like to see the model, and even this existing report, address the question, how far are people really willing to walk? And the document says pretty clearly in here, perhaps not on this page, but it's not the total number of downtown car parking spaces, it's the distribution. So that's a question of, well, if it's still a three-minute walking radius, is that still considered enough car parking for, you know, a third of the downtown area? So I'd like to see that teased out a little more, because that's, and be able to address it in your quantitative model. And then at the bottom of page 58 says, no data was available, should be, were available, no data were available on the total supply or recent demand of downtown on-street parking. Seems to me the city has something about that, where the staff sort of counted spaces on the curbs, and maybe that can plug into here. And on page 60, there's a paragraph about the residential parking permit program, and it says residential permits are available for $15 a month. Is that, someone for staff can answer this. So do people in a residential permit program pay $15 a month to get a permit? Or in other words, $180 a year? It's $15 a year. All right, well, major mistype there. All right. Permits for $15 a year. And then the next paragraph is about waterfront parking and so on. I'd like to throw in the mix here for modeling or policy development, have nearly all the city just with the residential car permit program, and see if your modeling can address that. And that would get to a lot of the tension when projects come up for review about where planners and deciders think that a residential project or a commercial project doesn't have enough car parking. And people may say, well, they don't need it. But then the other argument is, well, they go out into the neighborhood anyway. So maybe you can address that variable in this model, like, you know, willingness to drive elsewhere or cruise for a parking spot. And I, there's a lot of cities that have these, and I think it may get to a lot of tensions in city planning. And to pile on top of that, much of Santa Barbara is in the California coastal zone, which pretty much cannot have a permit enforcement program, because the coastal zone is supposed to be available to every Californian or everyone in the world. So that may or may not make a residential permit program feasible anyway, because you can't have that in the coastal zone. So on to some of the public comments. It definitely seems like the Upper State Street study from a year or two ago doesn't seem to be represented in the existing conditions report too well. So if you could all could revisit that, you know, it was a different consultant, but, you know, think about if the work is worth plugging in here. And I think that could really address a lot of the questions from the Citizens Planning Association in their letter. So for that, I'll leave that for just comments about where we're going from here. Thanks.
Committee Member Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got just a couple of quick comments and then a couple of questions. I guess since we're pointing out errors, I was just going to mention, I noticed both in the report and on your slide, you identify the Transportation Development Act, or TDA, as a federal funding source. That's actually state of California. Sales tax collected statewide returned to the county of origin, primarily for transit with some other uses for other transportation purposes. The gentleman from Caltrans, Mr. Schaefer, I believe, as Mr. Bradley pointed out, Committee Member Bradley, was referencing out TSM, or Transportation System Management, which despite the fact that when I was starting in this business, that was often called tinkering superficially at the margins, nonetheless, there probably is some value in including, looking at those things. And I do hope that you will be addressing issues like that on the 101. I was just going to point out, too, the transit data from MTD that you have in here is from fiscal year '07. Fiscal year '08, which ended June 30th, actually was a substantial increase in ridership, up to 8.1 million. If it's not too late in the process, you can contact me or someone else at MTD if you'd like to get updated information on that. And to the extent that transit is referenced as improvements to transit, increased frequency, longer spans of service, and what have you, it needs to be, I think, explicitly understood that for every, if you look at it at one level, at every hour of time that a bus is out there on the street, it takes a lot of money and additional subsidies. At best, we get maybe a 40% return from the fare box on the cost of the service. So more transit is great. I'm certainly a proponent of that, but it just needs to be understood that there needs to be additional subsidy in large quantities. And along those lines, so say that there is an assumption that there's going to be a big increase in transit. How are the dedicated transit lane conceivably, how will the model, what would the model do to address a major increase, say, in the availability of transit? Or along those same lines, if there really is a, although Santa Barbara, I think, has a very good biking and walking network, there are obviously holes in that. And if we do, we're to assume that by the year 2030, there is a, pretty much a complete network, so vastly improved transit, a complete network for biking and walking, how would your model respond to that?
It would look at it in two parts. If the proposal would be, say, on State Street, to convert an existing travel lane to some type of other use, then we could, you'd definitely model that, and you'd see what happens to the performance of State Street itself in terms of intersections and intersection level of service and all the other measures. Now, in terms of the effect on vehicular traffic in the model, what we'd look at is we'd say, how is the proposed fixed route bus service different than it is today? What types of trips is it serving in terms of the zone-to-zone in our model? And we would make adjustments to reduce vehicular trip rates to reflect the ridership increases, incorporating changes in land use, of course. And that's how we'd adjust the vehicular trip generation rates, but it would be specific to the new corridors that are currently unserved. And so it's sort of a, we don't have a true transit model in this model, but we do have ways that we can reflect the shift away from trip making in cars to transit trips.
Right, that's all.
Okay, Commissioner Bartlet.
To start out, I have three or four questions regarding what we've been presented, and then I have some comments that I'd like to put forward. First of all, following up on Commissioner Jacobs' question earlier this evening, on page 24 of the report, there's a statement about approximately 25,000 daily trips by commuters from all the adjacent cities. So is that the number that we would be looking at in terms of our swell or influx of vehicles into the city during the daytime? Down in the bottom right corner of page 24?
That would be the, that would be the number in terms of vehicular trips. The actual number in terms of persons, though, would be tied to how many, what the vehicle occupancies are for those two.
Right, but in terms of vehicles, we're gaining at least that many people, obviously.
Right, and then you're losing some that are leaving, of course, but yeah.
Okay, I mean, is there, I mean, you measured all the boundaries of the city, so at any point during the day, you know how many vehicles are there based on who came and who left. I mean, what is the delta between the nighttime and the daytime? Have you been able to determine that yet, or...
The delta between the nighttime and the daytime.
Yeah, do we have 80,000 cars in Santa Barbara at night and 120,000 cars during the day, or...
Oh, oh, yeah, I don't know that we...
Then we can sort of extrapolate that as to about what that would be in terms of people, but...
We have the, yeah, we have the daily vehicle miles traveled, and then we have the AM and we have the PM. the AM and we have the PM vehicle miles traveled, if that's.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out how we can get there.
Okay.
Also, in your presentation, you said that the model is based on a series of land use assumptions for each parcel. Now, is that info available, so that we can see what the assumptions were? And did those assumptions include the RENA allocation? And, you know, what are these assumptions?
We're working on it, and you will be able to look at the assumptions. As was mentioned in the earlier presentation, so far, we have the existing on-the-ground land use database, and that is distributed out and already is being used to calibrate the model. I think you've seen a lot of that already from the Development Trends Report in summary form. But what we're working on now is looking ahead to the future, again, based on projected scenarios for growth on non-residential and residential growth in the city. And then we're looking at how to distribute that through the city to the parcel level. So, you know, once that work is done, and we're inputting that into the model and inputting that into the environmental impact report analysis on various different impacts, that would be available for review as part of those documents upcoming, in terms of how, what kinds of assumptions were made and so forth.
And was the RENA assumption included in that?
The RENA assumption would be one of the scenarios that would be looked at, certainly. I mean, it is one of the policy options that's -- or policy decisions, at least at the regional level, still in debate, but it would be one of the scenarios that we'd be looking at.
Okay.
You remember back to the last set of workshops, last two set of workshops, where we were looking at a range of residential growth assumptions and a range of non-residential growth assumptions that we would be studying as part of the EIR process.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, then I have a question on the model. Is there assuming that we can figure out a way to fund the model, to use it in the future, rather than just to test our assumptions? Would that model, then, be able to be used in lieu of ITE numbers for trip generation and so forth, to analyze projects?
Yes. What that would mean is that it would fundamentally change the way that you would direct those preparing traffic studies to do so. They would rely on the model to do the trip generation distribution and assignment for the project. You'd rely on the model to do the background growth. It would do the cumulative impact analysis, and that would take all those other assumptions away, frankly, and they would all be standardized, and the model would be relied on for those purposes.
I would think you could probably fund the whole model with being able to get answers in 10 minutes versus doing initial studies and EIRs, and you could certainly pass it on to the developer, most likely. And then if we did continue the use of the model beyond our testing our assumptions, how frequent, then, do you need to update your, you know, your host counts and everything else to keep the model viable, to keep it moving forward?
Varies from community to community, depending upon the magnitude of change. You'd probably want to do some validation and calibration checks in conjunction with any sort of routinely scheduled update in the traffic counts. You definitely want to update it and fine-tune it with, in conjunction with any significant upgrades to the SB CAG model. That would be a good, you know, benchmark to do that as well.
Okay. And then I think in terms of some of the very early scenarios that we would just want to run as test cases, just so that we have the ability to make some valuable decisions in the near future, I think one would be just change the gas pricing, and how high does gas have to go before we have no traffic problems? You know, we could probably run -- that would take 10 minutes.
We'll have Mark do that one.
And then I think the other one that Commissioner Jacobs mentioned also, I know that the city was considering, you know, a $500,000 study on a transit lane on Outer State Street or something like that. I mean, could we run that with the model and save that money and put it toward using the model in the future? Or, I mean, would that help us at this point? That would be a good early one to test out.
The model can answer some of the questions you'll have about -- yeah, that's correct.
And then the other biggie is the item that's on page 25, sort of the lower-left corner and up into the right, where the real issue is where we're trying to put development near transit, also happens to be near the same impacted intersections, which are near the freeway. Now, could we run some what-ifs on proposing to -- let's say it's workforce housing in an area there, where we would be eliminating the trips from the freeway, because they're not commuting to town, so we could really test those assumptions? Because right now, under the current scenarios, you can't do projects there, because ITE puts you over the level of service. So I think testing some of those assumptions early, so that we can tell, does putting small units that are for the workforce and affordable in that location work versus having sprawl and big houses in the suburbs? I mean, those are the things, the decisions we need to be able to make right now with some confidence that they've been tested.
Without a model, you're limited in a traffic study to doing simple arithmetic additions of traffic. You can't analyze the dynamics of a future scenario where the land use that you're proposing will in fact interact and result in changes. We know that that happens. So that gives you the opportunity to look at it differently.
Yeah, even without specific projects, I think we need a few scenarios, so that we have the confidence to move forward, that at least the things that we think are true might actually happen.
Yeah, big advantage is the cumulative analysis is a lot more stable with a model than other techniques.
Okay. And this will be ready in one more day, you said?
It's -- we're just.
I mean, we're anxious.
We're just making some fine-tune adjustments, really, right now. It's ready.
No, this is great. Thank you.
I want to go back to committee member Cooper.
Very impressive, all the questions, all the answers, all of your work. Can this model predict what these changes that might be put into the model have in an economic impact on either the retail in Santa Barbara and/or the sales tax income to the city of Santa Barbara? Because all I've heard so far is transportation, transportation, congestion. But does anyone know that if you do this or do that, how will it affect the retailers and the income for the city of Santa Barbara in tax revenue?
Those are very interesting questions. The model, this particular model is more focused on the interaction of land use and transportation, but there are measures that you could extract from it, I think, to help plug into that kind of economic analysis, for sure.
I just feel that it's, you know, it's not -- I mean, we could like, you know, we could put gas at a certain price and eliminate the whole damn city. But I think with some of these decisions, there really has to be a, okay, well, we're going to get what we want, but is what we want really what we want in terms of a sustainable economic environment? And that's something that I think this committee and future committees and commissions need to somehow think about when they're pushing the button on the model.
You're correct.
I think that answers the questions. Why do we have a city council? So we can push those questions all up there. Well, thank you again for being here. I think, once again, we've managed to make your evening interesting, and you've managed to do the same for ours. A couple of comments I had, I think I heard Mickey Flax talk about the cost of housing, and I was reading through a couple of things here, and it comes up in a couple of the statistics you talk about, about vehicle ownership and transit ridership and the length of commute and things like that. And it's part of the same question committee member Cooper had there, the interrelatedness between the issues. Housing prices and the housing market in Santa Barbara has a lot to do with everything else. When we have 90% of our folks overspending on housing, of course, they can't spend as much on transportation. And some people make some heroic decisions about how to spend the rest of their money, and some decide to splurge on transportation, some splurge on other things like food. So it makes sense to me that in a city where we have that type of demographic and housing numbers, that the vehicle use numbers, the number of vehicles and things like that are also low. It's not one of those we can build ourselves out of, I don't think, but needs to be kept in mind. There's one comment about pedestrians, too, and I've heard at a seminar last year that every trip begins and ends with a pedestrian trip. So pedestrian trips are vital and key, and they're not pedestrian versus cars, but we're all pedestrians, and that really is an emphasis in this modal split and analysis and everything else for me. So I'm glad to see the emphasis on that here. Some of the writing in here I didn't agree with when we were talking about the adequacy of bike facilities, too, because most of the times I drive my car around town, I don't come back cursing about that pothole or that pile of gravel against the curb or that uneven surface over there. Very minor things have a big effect on bikers on the streets and that don't influence people in cars. So I think special attention needs to be paid, special mind needs to be made to that as well, that there are some things that, small things that can be done that would make a great difference to our ability to bike, especially since we're looking at pulling more people out of their cars and putting them on bikes, as some people have accused us of trying to do. I think those are the folks that are shy away from traveling along Upper State Street, which is listed as a Class II bike lane, but I know a lot of people who won't drive on Upper State Street just because of the conditions up there. So I think keeping some of that in mind is important as well. Thinking of my island, my Mesa Island, where I live, some of the statements about existing conditions affect reality or are different than the reality up there. For instance, Cliff Drive, I hear people talk about, while we don't have many vehicle pedestrian collisions on Cliff Drive, so it's a safe street. Well, people long ago have learned that they cross Cliff Drive at their own peril, at their own life, so we've weeded all those people out in prior years.
[laughing]
And most of us now know we stick to our one side of Cliff Drive. So just because there's no accidents doesn't mean it's a safe situation or it's a good situation. The same is true with, like, police crime numbers and things like that. So keep keeping that in mind. And reading through the Mesa discussion, too, it made, I consider it an island, because we're kind of separate from the city geographically, and you really have to cross some bridges to get into the city. You have to go down Creo and get into there. So even though Creo and the 101 interchange is not discussed as part of the Mesa, most of us who go downtown have to go through that intersection and sit through three or four red lights on a Friday afternoon to get into town. So the Mesa might be not congested, but what we have to go through to get to where we need to go is -- I like some of the Quality of Life questions that I heard come up here, too. It brings me to mind, I think, the test of any good general plan is the feedback loop, and that's probably what was missing the last time around, to talk about whether we're going to be able to keep the model and work with it as part of that aspect, too. But some of this talk about the mode split studies in the future, I think there need to be some point in time where we don't just kick this thing off the cliff and watch it land, but five years from now, a year from now, two years from now, there are regular intervals where we sit back and say, "Okay, these were the 10 goals we had when we started this process. How are we doing? And what can we measure in order to satisfy ourselves that we're achieving that goal?" I think that's an important aspect of what we're doing here today and in the future with this general plan process. I think we've all had a good say. Anybody else have any closing comments, or committee member Boyd?
I'd like to get copies of those 20 or so questions that the model has addressed. I'm going to make that available to all of the committee. And lastly, you made no comment. I didn't make any comments. The trips that come in on rail, are they reflected in any way, all the people who come and visit Santa Barbara?
The, to the extent that those trips would have been made by a motor vehicle but are not, they are, in fact. So.
What does that mean?
If you took, let's say you took that service away in the future.
Right.
Those trips would all of a sudden show up on the system, but they would be vehicle trips, car trips. That's what would happen. But they are reflected in the actual trip calibrated and validated model we have. We don't have that coded into the model, and we don't model the trains themselves, but we do model the impact that they have on the performance of the transportation system, if that makes sense. But, for example, we could test the effect of increasing the frequency of that service and see what that would do to reduce vehicle trips and therefore benefit the increased mobility for other modes.
I don't know how you'd model that if you don't already have it.
Well, it's built into the calibrated and validated model, in the sense that so are pedestrians, bicycles, transit, and all the other modes.
Okay. Commissioner Larson?
Thanks for this opportunity. I just was thinking of the island on the Mesa that we share, where we live, and one of the dreams I have is that there would be some sort of small shuttle buses up there, and I would hope that the model could work in these neighborhoods, have the capability of showing the effect of getting smaller shuttles into our hill areas, both on the Mesa and in the Riviera. You see it very commonly in Europe. There are just little vans everywhere, picking up people, and I just would like it to be able to do that. Thanks.
Just a minute. I didn't want to let go to unnoticed the, what I observed as a distinct invitation on Caltrans' part to participate in regional planning with the city. It sounds like something that would be very worthwhile, continuing that dialogue.
Committee member Pritchett.
One of the written comments we got by email from a Bruce Bernworth as an individual brings up the point about planning for residential land uses along the freeway corridor and the enhanced air pollution, air quality along the freeway corridor. So I just want to throw that in the mix to have that influence some of the zoning and residential locations in the plan. And I do hope that the, what do you call that, the calibrated and prime?
Calibrated.
Calibrated and validated definitely is robust to look at commuter train or passenger trains functioning as commuter trains. A lot of us in our transportation lives are working very hard to get a train system in Santa Barbara, so I'd like to know if we had three trains unloading 300 people apiece at certain hours of the day, how will that affect traffic? So I hope that's right in there. Because that, anyway, it's a big project, a lot of us are counting on working. And you've got plenty to chew on now. Thanks.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll conclude this item, unless you have anything else, staff?
Yeah, just a couple more things in wrapping up this item. One thing I really liked, the question on Measure A, what would it be like if Measure A didn't pass? And we know that would be pretty radical because of all the transit funding, for sure, for the city that's contributed to Measure D, to MTD, the transit service that would go away. So that's pretty important to look at. Also, I said it last time we were together, and I'll just say it again, so that I can say I did, later on, in a couple of years, when you have the model running and it's and you're doing it for land use in front of the Planning Commission, and someone says, "Well, these modeling efforts are producing a lot less trips than the ITE did the old way." And I just want to tell you that that's, you've seen evidence of that in the report today, is that ITE is much more conservative than Santa Barbara characteristics. So just be careful what you ask for. It's a less, it'll be more accurate, but less conservative. So I'm just, I'm giving you that signpost. And then finally, just, and you guys have been asking a lot about, okay, so what if you do this in the model? What do you get that? And it's been good, we've been recording all that. The thing that'll tell us exactly what we're going to test, the main ingredients is going to be what we come up with in the framework report that's now just being published and coming out, and I think most of you have it now, and what the policies, the final policies that we measure, our project that we're going to measure.
the final policies that we measure, our project that we're going to measure in the SEQA document, that's primarily our modeling target, but then also the other things that you've mentioned today, and if there's other things that you can think of and come up with, please let us know in the public hearings or by email. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton. Mr. Allen?
Just want to remind both the Planning Commission and the Transportation and Circulation Committee of a joint meeting that we're trying to get scheduled for October 16th. I know Commissioner Thompson mentioned when he was making his comments about the study that we're doing and looking at the circulation around Cottage Hospital, Mission, and Las Pecitas, so we're looking at October 16th for a joint meeting. That's kind of the kickoff of the entire analysis that we're doing, and we want input from both the Planning Commission and the Transportation and Circulation Committee before we get down the road and start the public input process of that. So it's really important that as many members of both the Commission and the Committee show up at that meeting so we can get your feedback and the input prior to having, turning the consultant loose on doing the analysis.
Is that separate from the scheduled meeting October 23rd?
Well, I haven't talked to the Chair about that portion yet, so as of it is right now, that's the only thing we have for the October meeting, because we're going to have a really heavy schedule for the TCC in September, so.
When you say 16th, you mean joint meeting with the Planning Commission?
With the Planning Commission.
That'll be a Thursday afternoon meeting.
Right, so it's going to be in the afternoons, you know, I guess we're sometime after 3:30 in the afternoon, so depends upon how much is on the Planning Commission agenda and how much time you take, and when we can get the TCC in. And if it goes in the evening, we're going to meet here. If it doesn't go in the evening, we'll meet in the city council chamber. Okay, thank you.
Good, thanks for the heads up. Sheriff Myers?
Well, the Planning Commission certainly thanks the Transportation and Circulation Committee for the opportunity to participate in this dialogue. It's been fun and robust, and with that, I will adjourn the Planning Commission and allow you to continue your business. Thank you.
Do you want to continue or not?
Mr. Dayton, due to the hour of the evening and pressing events elsewhere, I guess, this could be a very brief item. We've been given some new information tonight, and keep that in mind, or we could, reschedule us at another time. Maybe we just need five minutes?
Five minutes, maybe less.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the-
I just want to make sure that you are up to speed on what's going on with Plan Santa Barbara. The, and we were originally going to do this ahead of time, so it made more sense with what we did tonight, but in interest of time. So, and you were all aware of the round one of the workshops that we did, which were in March, and they were mainly grassroots meetings, and then we moved into the round two, which started with the Land Use Development Trends Report. All these meetings were with the Planning Commission, kind of at the helm, but you were all invited. I know many of you attended these workshops in March of 2008. And then, we came up with the Policy Options Report, and then had our meetings this last July at the Faulkner Gallery. And I know many of you also attended one of two, one or both of those public workshops, where the public were, was involved in the small groups. We talked about the land use, the land use benefits to community. In other words, what are the, what types of land uses do we want to see that have benefits to the community? And looked at key focus areas and development standards, and then also secondary dwelling units was one of the topics we were looking at. All this has led up to what you now have in front of you, the General Plan Update Framework, Draft Policy Preferences. Now, one of the things you'll notice about this document is that we've switched gears a little bit in trying to make it look like a, more accurately, a framework of the final product. In other words, we're leading to a general plan update or amendment, and so we've structured this document to feel more like a general plan. It's intended that all the elements would be bound under one, could be bound under one document, so this is kind of the genesis of that, or the feel of that approach, and how it's, we're looking at this as more of a comprehensive integration of the elements and how they relate to one another, specifically how the community has called us to the task of bringing a more sustainable, holistic approach to looking at the future and how all the elements relate to one another. So I want to draw your attention to the new structure. This will be thoroughly vetted by the Planning Commission on the 11th, 10th and 11th, so the 10th at 9 o'clock, 9:00 AM, and on the 11th at 1:00 in the afternoon.
Your staff report says 9:30 on the 10th.
Okay, 9:30.
Okay.
And so, we invite you to participate, of course, and really welcome that participation. Please look at the document. If there's any questions that you have, particularly regarding the transportation section, please give me a call. I'd like to discuss that with you. And then, please do come and participate in those meetings. This will lead up to the Planning Commission then forwarding the document with changes to the council, the council approving and acting, and then that will become, in sequo terms, our proposed project for the environmental, and it will signify the commencement of the SEQA, or the environmental review, the beginning of the environmental review. So if you have any questions on where we are in Plan Santa Barbara and the process and your role, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Any questions?
Let me add also that on September 11th at 7:30 in the morning, the presentation we were, and the discussion we were planning on having this evening regarding the Plan Santa Barbara, we're going to be having that with the Downtown Parking Committee, so the committee members are invited to attend that meeting. If the Chair wishes, we can make that a joint meeting so you can actively participate as well and formally provide your input as well, so that's an option to the committee as well.
Okay, thank you. That September 11th meeting was the parking, Downtown Parking, okay, thank you. And that's 7:30 where?
Here.
Here, okay.
Are these all, these two consecutive days of Planning Commission, are they in here or somewhere?
There was a memo included in the-
Really? Okay. We've got a lot of memos tonight.
It was in the, within the Policy Preferences document.
Okay.
Okay, one more question?
Yeah, a question, the transportation or circulation policies in here, are those the ones that are going to be modeled? And are, and some, a number of the policy options that were talked about tonight are not here in this list. How will those be handled?
Well, specifically the questions, for instance, like the Highway 101 and transit increases, the things that were mentioned tonight-
Yeah.
-the Kai-Rial one-way change, dedicated transit lane on Upper State Street, all those things we've-
Increased parking, parking in the downtown area, off-street parking meters versus pre-parking.
I think something to that, to that is in the policies about parking. We do have some-
There is something in there.
Pretty strong language about parking, but we have written down the external to that document, and they have been on our radar. I don't think any of them were a big surprise for us that you mentioned, and so that our intention is to model those. I think the big question that Brian Welsh pointed out, which is a really important one, is which assumptions do you put together in the same scenario? And that'll take some thinking.
All right. Big question.
I guess that's what the next meetings are for. Okay, well, I see no more questions coming forward. I think you've questioned us out tonight.
Okay, we adjourned.
With that, by acclamation, meetings adjourned.